Could I like to call the meeting to order? If you haven't done so already, could you please turn your phones off? All right. We'd like to start with the prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our Father.
In the name of the King, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. On earth as it is in heaven, in goodness as day, our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy nice kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
... to the life of the United States of America, and to a republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, this time I'd like Ms. Hurley to read a statement on the coronavirus.
This is actually the press release notice that we sent out yesterday morning. It says, "Due to the concerns about the coronavirus, the county council is encouraging citizens to watch the council meetings remotely. The meetings can be viewed live on PAC 14, or you can watch replays of the meeting on YouTube and on the county's website. The council will accept public comments by email, so you don't have to attend a meeting and speak at the podium. Your emails can be, you can email your comments to Laura Hurley, @Lurahurley@WacomicoCounty.org, or mail them to the council office at PO Box 870, Salisbury, Maryland 21803. All public comments received one hour prior to the meeting will be read into the record at the meeting. Public comments must include your name and county of residence. The council will still be meeting on the first and third Tuesday of each month, and the public may still attend in person, but we are encouraging people to stay home and watch the meeting from their TVs. If the situation changes, we will keep the public informed."
Thank you, and we appreciate everyone that understands. Right, at this time I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with a second.
So move.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time I have a proclamation to recognize Arbor Day in Wacomico County. Mr. Steve Miller, Director of Parks and Recs, will be here to accept it, and we have Council Member Josh Hastings going to read this proclamation.
So I'm the biggest tree hugger around here, so this is definitely the, I'm the right person to read this. Proclamation for Arbor Day, whereas in 1872 was proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and so a holiday called Arbor Day was first observed when planting of over 1 million trees in Nebraska. Whereas not only can trees reduce erosion, valuable topsoil, lowering heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, but also valuable renewable resource to enhance the beauty of our community. Whereas Wacomico County is proud to join our nation and the world in recognizing Arbor Day on the first Wednesday of each, of April each year, consistent with the State of Maryland designation for Arbor Day. On Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, the ceremony will be held with a tree planting event at Pirate's Wharf in Whitehaven, Maryland. Now therefore, the Wacomico County urges citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect woodlands and increase tree cover and the beneficial, and the benefit of current and future for the benefit of, for the benefit of current and future generations done this day, the 17th of March, St. Patrick's Day. Happy soon-to-be Arbor Day.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Okay, Ms. Hurley.
Okay, good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We do have several changes to the agenda this morning. Quite a few work sessions have been postponed. The discussion on the utility scale solar will be rescheduled, as well as the discussion on the sale of beer and wine at the liquor dispensaries. The letter of opposition to House Bill 1312, Senate Bill 841, and the Wacomico County Board of Education quarterly work session will also be postponed. And looking at the agenda, the first item is Resolution Number 14-2020, to unseal closed session minutes from February the 18th, 2020, titled "To Consult with Staff, Consultants, or Other Individuals About Pending or Potential Litigation," to protect the county's legal position and to discuss personnel at the state's attorney's office. For the most part, everything that was discussed at that closed session has now been discussed openly, specifically at our March 3 meeting, so there does not seem to be any reason to keep those minutes confidential at this time.
Thank you. This time I need a motion to approve Resolution Number 14-2020 and a second.
So move.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 15-2020, declaring that Safety Resources LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property at 1938 Windsor Drive, Salisbury, Maryland 21801. In order for a business to qualify for enterprise zone benefits, it must meet one of the two specific statutory requirements, which are that the business must either make an investment in capital improvements of more than 50,000 or hire more than two employees since it has been located in the zone. Safety Resources LLC is eligible for the enterprise zone based on the hiring of at least two new full-time employees, and we do have Laura Soper here, who is the City of Salisbury Enterprise Zone Coordinator.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-2020 and a second.
So move.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Got a motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, Resolution Number 16-20, I'm sorry, 152020, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 16-2020, declaring that Arvid Jean, DMD, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property at 614 East Shore Drive, Salisbury, Maryland 21804. This company is also eligible for the enterprise zone benefits based on the hiring of at least two more, or two full-time employees.
All right, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 16-2020 and a second.
So move.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 17-2020, to establish the Wacomico County Youth Advisory Commission and approval bylaws. The county council held a work session on the postpone, proposed youth advisory commission and bylaws, and sent a letter to the county executive with our recommendation to establish this commission last November. The county executive has now submitted his endorsement, and before you is the resolution to approve the bylaws and the establishment of that commission.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 17-2020 and a second.
I have a comment on the, looking at Section 8. It's, the administrative support is county council.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Good.
Yeah, the, Section 8, the administrative support is the county council office. I had recommend changing it to the local management board will provide administrative support. I spoke with the executive branch, and they were in agreement with that.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion to amend the bylaws?
I make a motion to amend the bylaws.
Second. Got a motion and a second to amend the bylaws, any discussion? No discussion? All right, need a, all in favor, say aye.
Can we, can we vote on the amendment first?
Okay, let's vote on the amendment first.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Now we're voting on Resolution 172020. All in favor, say aye.
Still discussion, if I could.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Couple things, not a lot. In Article 3, where it's functions of the body, number nine talks about the identification of needs and the interests, and the body shall report annually to the executive and the council. It's a small thing, but I thought maybe we might want to change that to May, instead of forcing them to have to report. We recognize the fact that they would, if they wanted to, they certainly had that opportunity, but I was a bit concerned on maybe going too far in saying that it's required by law that they report annually. So I'm just throwing that out there. That's my motion.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
We change it from shall to may.
I have a motion to change it from shall to may, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we need a motion to vote on.
Nope, I'm not done yet.
You're not done yet, that's fine, go ahead.
I'm not done yet. I think under Section 5, under alternates, Article 4, membership, it's on 104 of the PDF file. It says that if a member is absent, an alternate member may sit as a voting member, and once seated shall be counted in determining a quorum. I wasn't sure, Mr. Taylor, maybe you could help us, whether or not that should require a proxy. That statement should say that with, upon, whatever it is, receipt of a proxy, then that person may become a voting member.
I don't see any problem with it the way it is now. I mean, it does refer to an alternate, and are there going to be appointed alternates?
No. I don't know, I didn't see where there was any designated.
I haven't, I didn't prepare these and haven't reviewed them, but I mean, if there are designated alternates that can sit, then I don't see that there's any need for any proxy, and I don't know who would issue the proxy.
Well, the proxy would come from the absentee member. The member would say, "I'm not going to be there, but I will allow so-and-so to speak on my behalf."
I think that's maybe questionable, but I don't know honestly whether that would be a good procedure or not.
Typically, it would be a written proxy.
Yeah, I understand that, but the members are designated through a certain process, and then have a member just designate anybody else in his or her absence, I think, begins to deviate from the initial process of appointment to this group. I mean, I can look at that if you want to defer it, but I, you know, off the top of my head, it just doesn't sound like a good policy.
I don't know, most committees that I'm in, if someone can't attend, they're required to have a proxy in order to, in order to speak on the behalf of the absent member.
Well, I mean, every, every group, of course, has its own rules, but this is a governmental body, quasi-governmental body, and I think there might be some concern with that, but I just don't know right off the top of my head.
Well, it says that the county executive of Wacomico County may, not shall, but may appoint one or more alternate members, so we don't know whether or not there are going to be alternates.
Well, I mean, to the extent that there are alternates, I think that the problem is, solves itself. If there aren't, if he doesn't appoint alternates, or the alternates aren't available, then I think you've got a problem. I, I don't think that the proxy method is a good method to do this, but I don't know, sitting here today, that it's not.
Well, maybe, maybe I should change that, and we should look at, instead of worrying about the proxy, just say that the county executive of Wacomico County shall appoint, instead of may, shall appoint one or more alternate, they need to be guaranteed.
That's a good idea, that sounds like a good idea to make.
All right, thanks. All right, that's my motion.
I'll second that. Make a motion to amend Section 5, alternates, to state that the executive of Wacomico County shall appoint one or more alternate members, and strike the word "may."
We have a motion and a second on the amendment. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, the amendment carries. Anything else, Mr. Cannon?
Yes, sir, thank you for asking. Under Article 5, Section 8 on vacancies, it says, "A vacancy in any office because of death, resignation, removal, disqualification, or otherwise may be filled by a majority vote of the members for the unexpired portion of the term." And I'm only bringing this up there as an option. Do you think that the actual committee itself should appoint an alternate, a new member, or do you think that should go back to the executive and the council to make that appointment? I'm throwing that out there for discussion.
Any discussion?
Right now, they're saying that the members of this, of this committee would be able to appoint another member, and I'm just saying, maybe we should have, that when someone can't bid, or someone is, dies or resigns, that it has to go back to the executive and the council to make that new appointment.
I think that's a good point. That section was taken from the Maryland State Youth Advisory Council bylaws, but that's on a much larger scale. Bring it down to the county, I think that that's, that's a very good point.
Okay. It's kind of what we do with any other committees. All right, well, in light of that, I would just make that motion that, to amend Section 8 vacancies, to state that, that the filling of a position would be done by the executive and with a confirmation by the council. I'll let you all worry about the wording.
So with that said, that's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Did you, second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Chair votes aye, the amendment carries. Mr. Cannon?
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm sure.
Are you sure, Joseph? Any further discussion? Okay, with that said, need a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, resolution carries. Ms. Hurley.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Okay. All right, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, one item today for introduction. It's by the council president. It is legislative bill number 02-2020. It is an act to extend the moratorium on the issuance of a building permit, pardon me, of building permits, permits plural, for an agricultural storage tank, which will store dissolved air flotation, open per NDAF, closed per Nwashdown water, from a rendering process pursuant to Wacomico County Code Chapters 225, 125, and 128. And it is to extend that for another six months.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, this time I need a motion to introduce legislative bill number 2020-02 and a second.
So move.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Davis.
If you go to planning and zoning, you're not going to go to planning and zoning and say, "I want a DAF tank." They're going to go and say they want a storage tank. And once they get a storage tank, we, I don't think we can permit what goes in there. That's MDE, who we've been trying to get up with, their advisor. I mean, anyone can go there today and say, "I want a storage tank," and approve it, and we don't have no control of what goes in it. So we're really beating ourselves up, but, I mean, we can extend it, but technically, there's nothing we can do. It's all the MDE.
I think the application would require for somebody to say what goes in the tank.
No, it's not. You talk to planning and zoning, they're not required to put it in there.
I'm not, are you done on any, I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Holloway?
I recognize, okay, thank you. You know, I think history will show this council, in the past years, has supported the poultry industry fully, and especially during the past zoning issues we had. I've had a lot of conversations with folks on both sides of the table with this. A lot of the folks at the Farm Bureau and poultry farmers themselves are not happy about this, because it does give a, shed a bad light on, on poultry farms. I've been told that the two people that do actually do the spreading probably don't want any more tanks, and that's, is probably right, but apparently it's a pretty lucrative business doing this, and there's not to say that somebody else might step forward and want a tank at some point in time. I think we should challenge the planning and zoning department to come up with some kind of regulations that we can, in some way, control this. We've seen the firestorm that ignited when we, when this other tank was built, and if that was to happen in another neighborhood, anywhere in the county, we would probably see that again. This doesn't have anything to do with the spreading of the material. The company that actually brings this in has very large tanks on their site in Dorchester County Valley Protein, I think it is, so they could, I think they could store it there. So I would support, I don't like the word moratorium, that, that sounds negative, but I would implore the planning and zoning to try to come up with some kind of regulations that would protect the citizens out here, and just be another one being built.
Okay. Mr. Hastings?
Yeah, I'd say, I still, I support this, I think, but I still think we need to have the state of Maryland intervene, I think Councilman Davis is right, you know, we need the Department of Agriculture to, and Department of Environment, but Department of Agriculture specifically, what, you know, this is currently an approved use for, for waste, but the question of whether this is more of a, you know, waste disposal system, as opposed to, you know, farmers, you know, having, like my family, yeah, chicken house, you put the manure on the ground, that's a, that's a good, it's a slow release nutrient, it's a positive thing. This is not produced on the farm, this is something that's spread elsewhere. I think the real issue is not particularly, the real issue, probably some of the bigger issue, I think that we've heard from a lot of communities, has been about the smell, and when it's actually applied, there are still, there are still issues when it comes to the fact that this, in this case, is a 3 million gallon tank that is open, so, you know, bugs or, you know, insects can land inside of it, even if it has crossed it over. There are real issues, and especially, you know, in, I mean, I got to say, with, obviously the biggest issue right now, the country or the world is facing is, involves disease vector. This is, this is one of those situations where it could be a future area for spreading pathogens. So I, we, I think we need to maybe, maybe we need to step up our game and have a letter to the Department of Environment or Agriculture, and, and try to come to a better understanding. I think it's important that the, that our local planning and zoning take a look at, you know, what's appropriate for our area, but more so, we need guidance from the state as to, you know, if this is a, if what is being put down could be, could further create problems in the future. So maybe that's a letter, maybe, maybe it's just inviting them to come down to the meeting, but I think we should consider that.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilman Hastings. Moratorium, again, as Joe said, I'm not, I'm not a fan of moratoriums. We put this in place to try to accomplish some goals, as in whether the zoning was correct, whether or not changes had to be made. I don't think there was much success in the entire six months, but I think it's important with what Councilman Hastings said, if we're going to put a moratorium on this for six more months, then I think we need to make a very concerted effort to address what the concerns might be, whether or not, you know, we want the state of Maryland to look at the Right to Farm Act because of the odor, whether we want maybe some, the industry to self-regulate and possibly put additives into this sludge that doesn't, that doesn't smell as much. The, the tank itself, I don't think really is the issue. It's similar to what we faced in the poultry industry with the poultry houses. In many cases, individuals would come here and they'd get to the podium, and they'd complain about the odor. In reality, they were complaining about the manure that was being spread on the fields and not so much the poultry houses, in some cases. So I wouldn't want to get that, that mixed up as well, and as, and as that, the tanks themselves may be okay, but it's really the spreading that's more of an issue. So if we're going to put a moratorium on it, I'd like to make sure we have some direction as far as how we want to address it, where we're going to go.
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Holloway?
I did have a conversation with somebody in the industry, and they are trying to put together a meeting with the state, and possibly the county and the industry involved. However, what we're going through with the coronavirus right now, that had to be put off, so they are moving to try to do something. So I think, you know, give this some more time, and maybe it'll work out.
Sure.
All right, any further discussion? That said, need a motion to introduce legislative bill 2020-02 to extend the moratorium. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, with one nay.
Mr. Dodd, I didn't want to interrupt your discussion, but there are two points maybe worth noting.
Yes, sir.
The first is on this particular tank that has been approved, but not yet built.
It's built.
Is it built now? Okay, the last time I heard it had not been. There's now a pending litigation on that, on the permit itself, as to whether that is actually a permitted use in the particular ag district. That's number one. Number two, there were references to the state's regulations regarding, it really has to do with their nutrient management regulations, and as far as I know, it's been about five or six weeks since I looked at those. They apply to the spreading of the product, not to the storage of it. I don't believe they discuss at all anything having to do with the storage, so the argument that is made sometimes, that the state regulations essentially preempt any county regulations, I believe would only apply to spreading, not to the storage. Ergo, and I'm kind of speaking quickly now, I think if the, if the county council wanted to, they could actually prohibit the storage of this material in tanks, if they wanted to do that. I'm not suggesting you should, I'm just making that, that observation.
Anything else? Ms. Hurley?
Yeah, Mr. Holloway? Mr. Taylor, you said there's litigation proceeding on the building of this tank, permitting of it.
Challenging the permit, yes.
So if another permit were issued, could somebody, I'm challenged that same way?
It could be challenged, sure.
Okay, so maybe this will prevent that, if anything else.
Mr. Hastings, if you'd be interested in drafting a letter, in getting with Ms. Hurley on that, as I agree, I think we should step up our game, as we gave county six months. Hey, Ms. Hurley, do you have anything else?
We can schedule the public hearing if you would like, because that's the next step. We can have that on April the 7th at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Do you want to do that now? Schedule the public hearing?
Well, we just talked about that, so we can, we can.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to put it on the calendar.
Oh, yes, I'll add it to the calendar.
Okay. Anything else? All right, time for public comments. If you would, come to the podium and state your name and your county of residence, if you have anything to say. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ashley Teagle, I'm a resident of Wacomico County, and also the executive director of Wacomico County Public Library. I wanted to offer you a few highlights about the services that the library offers to our community. We have a new strategic plan, and those copies have been distributed to you. Our new mission is to innovate, educate, and inspire. Our new vision is Wacomico County Public Library is an inclusive, welcoming community resource that strives to meet the diverse needs of all Wacomico County citizens. As the county council determines funding for various agencies, I would ask that you consider how the library supports all citizens of Wacomico County when making your decision. In FY '19, we had over 230,000 visitors to our branches, who attended 1,464 programs and classes. They made 3,355 meeting room reservations, and we answered 5,143 information questions. We had 42,584 computer users using library equipment, and 92,135 wireless sessions in our branches. We circulated over 87,000 materials through our bookmobile and the reader van, which specifically targets our senior centers, schools, and also childcare providers. We helped 104 individuals through our legal clinics, which do things such as help people with their child support questions, and also get criminal records expunged. We also had 1,463 children that came to our homework help center for assistance, and we had 2,848 visits to our job search center. In addition to all of these things, we also launched passport service at our center branch in the mall, and we now also lend hotspots out to library customers. I would like to thank the county executive at this time. He has committed $50,000 toward the purchase of a new bookmobile, and also supported the library in pursuing a state bond bill to achieve additional funding towards the purchase of that bookmobile. He has also been supportive of our efforts to get a new Pittsville branch, and I think there is some work to be done there as far as agreeing on a location and what that facility needs to look like, but I do feel the county executive has buy-in with offering a library that the Pittsville community needs. The library does, oh, and additionally, I also want to thank the county executive, he has recognized the important role in our county that the library offers, and so he is committed to offering us an increase to our operating budget to support all of the work that I mentioned above. The library does great work every day for our community, and we do this work at a bargain. Beacon's Economic Impact Report noted that for every dollar that's invested in our public libraries, our community. libraries, our community realizes a $5.40 return on this investment. We are a local employer and we use other local businesses to carry out the services that the library needs support with. When this council makes decisions to protect funding for our library, you're making a decision to keep books in the hands of our children. You're making a decision to help illiterate adults get the help they need to make it in our society. You are making the decision to help connect job seekers to employment opportunities and you are making a decision to support early childhood literacy. In a community where only 40% of our children have access to internet at home, your public library is an essential resource. Public libraries are important to any community that seeks to promote early childhood education, lifelong learning, workforce development, and small business development. Your public library is a catalyst for many great things in our community, but I need your help and support to ensure that those things can continue to happen. I look forward to engaging in further conversation with our council members about the public library. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
My name's Kenny Robinson. I live 8398 Riggin Road, 400 yards from this tank that has already been built. I had no intention of getting up here and speaking this morning, but I just sat back there and wrote ten lies that we have been told since us started. The tank originally was to be built for, let's start with it should have never been built. The planning and zoning did not ask what was going in it and they will not ask. Mr. Davis is completely right on that. They don't care. All they care is they're building the tank. Well, that is sure not much good planning and zoning as far as I'm concerned. They could put plutonium in it if they want after they build it. They don't care what they put in. We were told that it would be Burns only trucks hauling in here. That's the person that is building this tank. The very first truck come in on Friday the 13th of March was not a Burns truck. He turned in off the road, loaded with sludge that should not have been stored on Friday the 13th of March because it's supposed to be put on the fields in March. We were told it wouldn't be stored in the months that it could be put on the field. Another lie. The truck was owned by Southern somebody, not a Burns truck. Second lie. We were told critical areas wouldn't, was not being tore up to build this tank. Another lie. By the states and Wycomico County's own maps, he's in critical areas. We were told the disturbance would be less than an acre. Another lie. They're pushing two acres now. Hauling more stone and dirt yesterday to build the road up some more so they wouldn't get stuck. We were told there was no non-tidal wetlands involved. Another lie. There was an existing road to this tank site. There was never a road to this tank site. I've lived on the same piece of property for 64 years yesterday. There's never been a road there. There was a culvert there for tractors to get in off, into the field, but never a road. We were also told that there will only be DAF stored in, in this tank in the non-spreading months. The very first load that went in there was in a month that it shouldn't have been put on the field. Another lie. There's only chicken waste in this substance. Another lie. There's french fry oil, dead animals, whatever Denali or Valley protein can boil up and make chicken gut soup out of. That there's no nutrient benefit to the farmers. Mr. Holloway said this is a very lucrative business. Well, there's gotta be something there for somebody to want it if it's a lucrative business. Well, if it's a business, it should have never been put under agriculture. That's how the zoning put the application through, is ag only. And it said only to be spread on Burns' farmed or owned property. He spreads on at least five other farmers' properties. So, there's a list of 10 lies and we will continue to get more lies because nobody will take claim for allowing this to be done. As far as the moratorium, I agree with these two gentlemen here, it's a waste of time. I, I appreciate the effort, but if you can't ask what's going in the tank, what good is a moratorium? It's a waste of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Maida Finch. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm a member of the library board of trustees. However, I'm speaking today as a private citizen and not on behalf of the board. I wanna make three points regarding the recent discussions about a possible library program. Since libraries are institutions committed to providing information, it is in that spirit that I offer the following remarks. First, the American Library Association, the professional organizing bodies for libraries, offers clear guidance on the matter of library resources and programs. I'm quoting now from their policy manual. The American Library Association affirms that library-initiated programs provide vital support for the missions of libraries by providing users with additional opportunities for accessing information, education, and recreation. Libraries should actively seek to include a variety of programming options representing a diversity of genres, formats, and expressions exemplifying a multitude of viewpoints and cultural perspectives. Additionally, access to library resources and services should be available to everyone. The American Library Association stringently and unequivocally maintains that libraries and librarians have an obligation to resist efforts that systematically exclude materials dealing with any subject matter, including sex, gender, identity, or expression, or sexual orientation. Libraries should vigorously defend the First Amendment right of speakers and participants to express themselves. Library programming should not be canceled because of the topics of the program or the views expressed by the participants or speakers. Particularly germane to the issue we are facing now, the American Library Association opposes any use of governmental prerogatives that lead to the intimidation of individuals or groups and discourages them from exercising the right of free expression as guaranteed by the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. The suggestion at a recent council meeting that the council withhold funding from the library if it does not acquiesce to the objections of a group of parents is antithetical to the rights of libraries to provide programming that reflects the diversities of the communities they serve. Second, on the matter of the issue in question, Drag Queen Story Hour, and again, in the spirit of sharing information, it is important to understand what this program is. I share the following information from the Drag Queen Story Hour website. Drag Queen Story Hour is just what it sounds like. Drag queens reading stories to children in library, schools, and other community spaces. Most events are 45 minutes and designed for children ages three to eight, though this may vary by location or event. A drag queen generally reads three to four children's books, sings children's songs, and leads the children in a craft activity. According to their website, Drag Queen Story Hour helps children develop empathy, learn about gender diversity and difference, and tap into their own creativity. Drag Queen Story Hour can also be life-changing and ultimately life-saving for LGBTQ kids and teens, kids with LGBTQ parents or family members, and anyone who feels different because of their identity or interests who may not otherwise see themselves reflected in the broader culture. This type of programming reflects libraries as an American institution that, and again, I'm quoting from the American Library Association here, "values our nation's diversity and strives to reflect that diversity by providing a full spectrum of resources and services to the communities we serve." Finally, I want to conclude by stating that it is understandable as we navigate these issues to draw comparisons to other examples of materials and programs that might also be considered objectionable by some. However, it's important to ground these comparisons in actual, not imagined events. For example, lingerie story hour is not a suitable comparison. Again, in the spirit of sharing information, I offer Merriam-Webster's definition of lingerie, women's intimate apparel, a term first used to refer to women's underwear and bras in 1922. Conversely, according to the Oxford English Dictionary, a drag queen refers to a man who dresses in women's clothing, typically for the purpose of entertainment. Drag is an artistic way of expressing oneself and showing the world who you are or who you want to be. These are not comparable ideas. Instead, I urge you to consider other instances where library materials and programs have been contested, such as calls to ban books, objections to displays of materials, and instances of book burning. These are real examples of the challenges libraries face, and I suggest they are a better way to focus a conversation on controversial materials. We may not all agree on the resources available in our libraries, but they have the right and obligation to offer materials and programs that reflect the diverse communities they serve without fear of coercion or retribution. If a book does not interest me, I don't have to check it out. If I find a program objectionable, I don't have to attend it, and as a parent, I can prevent my children from attending, though I admit that now my children are teenagers, this is becoming a little more difficult. But these are my rights and your rights. It is not our right to deny access to library resources to others. Thank you for your time today and for your consideration on this issue.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more public comments? All right, in reference to our press at least, Ms. Hurley, do you have any emailed comments?
I do. I actually have two public comments that came in by email. The first one is from Gary Bullard, Comico County. His comment is as follows. Please make sure all Eastern Shore residents who are tested positive, positive for this virus are publicly named so the rest of us who have been in contact with them can quarantine themselves and take other measures so this disease can be stopped quickly. The second public comment is from Kristen Douglas of Wycomico County. I am writing to ask you to pull all funding from our Wycomico County libraries if they choose to host a Drag Queen Story Hour for children. As an educator and a parent, I am deeply concerned and make this request only as a last resort. My family and I have often enjoyed our local library and the resources it provides. I have personally met with Ashley Teagle, library executive director, and she did not commit to keep our library safe for children. I have some neighbors who would hail a Drag Queen Story Hour for children as social progress. This is the view, this is the view the American Library Association states on their website. However, I speak for those who, like me, strongly disagree with these neighbors. Children are vulnerable. It is immoral to purposely introduce or encourage gender, gender confusion to these young citizens. Councilmembers, you are representing citizens who are divided on the issue of a Drag Queen Story Hour. Though we are neighbors, we are neighbors who disagree on this social agenda, and we need you, our council members, to send a clear message to our library that it should not endorse the social agenda, but choose instead to be neutral and thus a welcome and unifying literacy haven for all of us. Please do not take tax dollars from all of us to support an agenda that violates the conscience of many of us. I am asking you to tell our libraries that your financial support is conditional upon their compliance to our, to your request to deny a Drag Queen Story Hour. And that's all.
So, I did meet with Ms. Douglas last week, and I do my best as the library's director to not allow for the spread of misinformation because I feel that is a key component of my job. So, I, at this time, cannot make any commitments for or against this program. I do invite the community to continue to have conversation with me, persons that are for and against this program. We will have a follow-up board meeting in April where this issue will be addressed. It is open to the public and I invite customers to attend. But to be clear, I also would like to remind everyone of the separation of church and state. And also, making it clear that the public library does have an obligation. I do get state money, I do get county money, and the request for this program was made to me by Wycomico County residents. And so, to be clear, this is not me choosing an opportunity to incite conflict in our community. This is me honoring and treating a customer the same way that I would any other customer. And I'm glad Dr. Finch brought up the discussion about real-life library examples, and I will leave you with this one. I am an African-American woman, and when I started this job in January 2019, we did not schedule any Black History Month programs, and so the Pittsville branch put a, a Black History Month display. And I was told, a customer told her, that they were essentially upset by, quote, "all the black faces on the books in the library." Now, just because that customer complained, does that mean that the library should remove all books that are written by African-American authors? I would also encourage the council to have the understanding, and again, I look forward to additional conversations if you need a little more background information on public libraries. But when we are talking about matters of programs, meeting room use, because that has come up, where someone told me, well, I feel like a hate group is meeting at your libraries, people have a First Amendment right, as Dr. Finch noted, and not only that, but as a library director, part of my neutrality comes from my personal bias is not in this. This is me saying, today it's LGBTQ plus story programs, tomorrow it could be the African-American book collection, the next day it could be an objection to a particular group meeting in the library. And so, I am challenging the council to make the best decision we can for making sure that information is accessible. There are many, many examples in the modern society of governments that limit access to information, to the internet, and to information resources. And I invite our community to use the library in the way that it best fits them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teagle. Time for council comments. Any council comments? Councilman Hastings?
Well, first of all, thank you, Dr. Teagle, Mr. Robinson, and Dr. Finch. We did, we did ask the public that they stay away from this part for the coronavirus, and I know this, I just wanna briefly speak on that. This is, of course, this is an issue that is global now, and this is something where we're all in it together. You know, there are a lot of folks that are, that they don't work, they don't get paid, and that they're gonna, and there's a lot of, you know, bars and restaurants that are now been ordered to close that, you know, that they don't, a lot of them are asking whether they can make it, you know, through the next month or so. So, that's some seriousness in there, including, I should also mention the Wycomico County Public Schools. A lot of folks get their, it's two meals a day, a lot of the children get their food and their nutrition through, through that. And with the schools closed, it certainly has been challenging. But I just wanna say briefly that I am, I was, I am actually really impressed by all the folks that have, who have reached out to try to meet the needs of, of the students who are not getting foods and, and actually see the county public schools have actually made options to try to make sure that nutrition is still a focus. And also, the amount of, I don't know if this is a good thing, or, I mean, I'm assuming this is a very good thing, but buying a gift card to different establishments, local businesses, to make sure that they have money in the door in the meantime. Hopefully, that'll be helpful. But as a whole, I do, of course, and I am encouraged by all the, all the amount of unity that is seeming to come out. We, we've been lacking unity for quite some time in American society. So, it's really positive to see out of something that's kinda terrible. So, be diligent, wash your hands, and thank you.
Any more council comments? Ms. Ackley?
Thank you. I am aware that school meals will not be served at Mardella or Northwestern. It's my understanding that Wycomico County Public Schools has an arbitrary threshold of how they determine what schools will be served meals. My concern is meeting the needs of the children in the rural, rural areas of this county, and they're not being met. Moving forward, I am hoping that the school administration and the superintendent will be able to work through this and provide meals for those students. It, it's, it's definitely a concern in my district and needs to be addressed. Thanks.
All right. Any more council comments? Mr. Holloway?
I guess I'll ask this question. I know this is a comment, but I'll ask a question. Should the council possibly get a letter concerned with the concerns Ms. Ackley has about the schools, some of the schools not serving lunches?
To the superintendent?
Right, yeah.
That's what council would like to, yes.
Is there a consensus?
I think that'd be appropriate.
Can't hear you.
I think that, that would be appropriate.
Mr. Davis?
He's got a comment about that.
I can provide you with an update.
Can you go to the podium?
Please do.
Just in case the mic can't pick you up.
So, we do have an update on that. The information has been coming out very quickly regarding this as of 5:00 PM on Thursday. So, we started off with the summer sites that we originally schedule each and every summer, and then reached out to our community partners and have just been waiting for some of them to get back with us. I sent an email while I was sitting here to Mrs. Ackley and some others. But just so you're aware, we've also
But just so you're aware, we've also added the Delmar Renovate Church as of yesterday, the San Domingo Zion United Methodist Church, the Hebron Epoch Dream Center, the Bi-Valve Westside Fire Department, and we're working with one of our board members, Mrs. Lewis, to add Pittsville and Willards as well. So we are also gauging the response from today, because today is the first day. As we, you know, found out, we would have the resources necessary to be offered, to offer three meals yesterday, starting today. So we have breakfast, lunch, and supper that's also being added today to each of those sites as well.
Okay. Ms. Ackley?
Thank you, Mr. Stoffer.
Mr. Hastings?
I do that. Josh and Kristen Mason, the owner of Vittles, reached out yesterday, wanted to help for the Mardella folks too, and that was another -- just another organization has reached out, another business, and that's really great to see.
All right. Mr. Cannon, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything, thanks. I was just curious as -- and I know this isn't a question answered, public comments and council comments, but I was curious as to how they're managing to distribute the food, because that's quite out of the ordinary to be distributing food throughout the county, and it's an -- must be quite an undertaking.
It is quite an undertaking, especially considering the circumstances. So we have utilized all available staff that we can to work out of six school sites and preparing all of the meals, and then from there, we're distributing them using staff, facilities, and also our volunteers in some cases where we can distribute them to the site, but we just need volunteers to work the site. And in many cases, the areas that we've added recently that I just listed are being worked by volunteers, so we do appreciate the community's support that we're receiving there. We've had a lot of responses and a lot of people reaching out to help with that. And as I said, we'll gauge the response and know a lot more after today, since this is the first day that the feedings have -- will start, and we'll be able to work off of that response as well if we need to add additional sites. It's been made very clear, the support from the community as well as from the governor and MSD that we will do whatever we can to meet the needs in our community.
Thank you.
Any more comments from Mr. Stoffer while he's up?
I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank you, thank the Board of Education for the excellent work. I mean, this is completely unexpected and without question unprecedented, and for you to be able to respond as quickly as you have to the degree that you have, I find that absolutely amazing, so.
No, I appreciate that recognition, and all the thanks and recognition goes back to the team of individuals that are working on this. We found out about this situation at 4:00 on Thursday, when everyone else did as well, and we've been working as a team and collaborating together on a variety of different issues and concerns around this, from the cleaning of the schools to the feeding of the community to make sure that we're doing what we can.
Great. All right. Any more council comments? Mr. Holloway?
I wasn't done. Just an update from the East Side a little bit. April 4th was supposed to be Mount Hermon Plow Days, but I did get information last night, all the council members were invited, and as well as the state delegation, I did get word last night, even though that isn't an outdoor event, that has been canceled. And I'm sure there'll be other cancellations coming along for events on the East Side, so that's all. And everybody, take care. Be careful. Thank you.
All right. We don't typically bounce back and forth, but we've got a lot going on, and a lot of people aren't here to go to the podium, so as it comes to our mind, we're speaking. So any more council comments? All right, Mr. Hastings, we really didn't ask anybody to stay home. We kind of encouraged them to stay home, and -- but they were still allowed to come to the meeting, then we encouraged them to send emails if they wish. I do want to thank everybody involved with these lunches for the students. I've been following a lot of it on social media where people are asking to volunteer. Board Member Lewis stated that she was making deliveries, so that's a good option. So it's good that this is happening. Unfortunately, this is creating a hardship on a lot of the families where they have to find daycare, and they still have to feed their kids during the day, even if they're working or not. So hopefully, we as a community can work through this. I do remember saying that the Hebron Parade for Easter is canceled. I don't know if the Fruitland Parade is canceled. The Farm Bureau Annual Meeting Dinner next week is canceled, and I guess we can post different cancellations as they come, but I appreciate everybody that is bearing with us through these tough times. It's tough for everybody, but we do have an obligation to continue business, so thank you for bearing with us. Any more comments?
DPI banquet's canceled.
What's that?
The DPI banquet.
The DPI banquet is a pretty big banquet. That's been canceled as well. Thank you, Mr. Holloway. With that said, need a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305b, one, to discuss personnel matters involving the county attorney and director of finance to protect the sensitive information. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Ma.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Ms. Hurley?
The next item on your agenda is a work session with the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism to talk about the youth and civic center revenue.
Okay, thank you. Let's take a five-minute break while they're getting this set up.